Yeah, we've been here and we can see things better.
Welcome, everybody. The hour is 3 o'clock. We'll get started. Before we move into our approving the order of agenda, though I do see a new face over there, Mark, do you want to bring up Maggie and maybe introduce her?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
I am excited to introduce Maggie Squire, our new Assistant Planner. She's been with us for about a month now, and she's from University of South Dakota in a degree in sustainability, dabbled in planning a little bit, and has had a pretty extensive internship with the city of Sioux Falls. So there's some good knowledge we'll be able to steal from her. And she is certainly available for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Maggie? We look forward to seeing you up here. Welcome to the team.
Welcome.
Thanks, Mark. Getting started with Item A to approve the Order of Agenda. There really are no changes. Just to note that Number One is continued to, that's the Section 14 Township 138 North, Range 49 West, is continued to June 4th, our next meeting. Other than that, everything will be heard today. Can I get a motion to approve the Order of Agenda?
Please.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is to approve the minutes from our last meeting that was held on April 2nd, 2019. It was in your packet.
Moved to proof.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And with that, then I'll announce the, we're having a joint Brown Bag meeting Wednesday, May 15th, same time, 11:30. Nicole, you want to talk about it?
Yeah, maybe just a couple of quick notes. A couple of things to note. One is, you know, it's a little bit of an odd month, and normally, you know, Brown Bag is two weeks after Planning Commission. So it's, but with the start of the week being last week. So we're a little off schedule there. And then, and then second, yeah, it started at 11:30. We are, for those that are listening in the public, and I've, we've been getting this question, but we are allowing time in the agenda for public input and discussion. So we really want this to be kind of an opportunity to get way in front, you know, those that might be interested in talking in more detail about the core neighborhood planning as we start to introduce our thoughts on what might go into an RFP for this process. And that's why the Joint Committee meeting with the Community Development Committee as well. So we're looking forward to this, and we understand not everybody can be there, but it's just a really good way to just start that public conversation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, let's move into the public hearing items. As I said, Item Number One is continued to June 4th. Let's hear Item Number Two, which is Timber, sorry, Timber Parkway Third Edition. Megan?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Before we start with the presentation on Item Two, I'd like to provide a brief update to the Commissioner, to the Commission on similar applications that you heard at the April Planning Commission meeting. Items A here shown on the map, Blue Water Creek Third Edition, and Item D, Timber Creek Third Edition, were both heard by the City Commission just last night at their meeting, and they did deny, the City Commission did deny these applications with a four-to-one vote. Item B, which is Bentley Place First Edition over here closer to Veterans Boulevard, was withdrawn by the applicant prior to the City Commission hearing. And Item C, Timber Parkway Third Edition, which is Item Two, you will hear just shortly. Next slide, this is also an image that you saw at last month's Planning Commission meeting. This is a study of conditional overlays that restrict off-premise advertising within commercial zones. And just to show some context here, this is Timber Parkway Third Edition. Across the street here to the west was the recent Fitzsimmons Edition. Kitty Corner here is the district, the Walmart, and some newer developments here in the city of Frontier. And as you'll see, this gateway into the city here at this intersection, everything within City of Fargo's jurisdiction. Jurisdiction has conditional overlays that restrict off-premise advertising, and I'll touch on that a little bit more later in staff's presentation. And just one quick note that if this application is to be approved, the proposed sign will be reviewed against the requirements of the sign code at the time that a permit, application is received for this item. So Item Two is Timber Parkway Third Edition, an application for a zoning change to repeal and reestablish a CO, conditional overlay, and is a continuation of an item from the April Planning Commission meeting. Currently, the conditional overlay on the property prohibits off-premise advertising. The applicant has requested to strike that requirement in order to allow off-premise advertising. On April 29th, the applicant provided an update to the application, which increased the proposed sign from 300 square feet up to 600 square feet, removed the property at 5081 Timber Parkway South, which is Lot 3, Block 1, Timber Creek Third Edition, this property here, and also requested to limit the location to just the west 100 feet of 4801 Timber Parkway South, which is Lot 4, Block 1, and directly adjacent to Interstate just on this property line here within the orange circle. Kyle Fryer and Mike Dragosovich are here representing the applications and are here for questions if you have, have any. So the, the current application here, the similarities here from last month is the proposal of a 40-foot tall sign up to 600 square feet adjacent to Interstate with two digital sides facing north and south. These slides here are, are images that are submitted by the applicant, shows location here, as well as some context and scale. This is an image also submitted by the applicant showing the sign. And note that this, this shown that was provided by the applicant is a 300-square-foot sign. This image was not updated to reflect the, the change of up to a 600-square-foot sign. So it would be much larger than what this image depicts. Given this application, staff thought it would be good to just go through the criteria as you heard at last month's Planning Commission, which is not typical. But I'll just run through the criteria quickly here and then touch on some additional points that were noted in your staff report. Criteria One asks if the requested zoning change is justified by a change in condition since the previous zoning classification was established or by an error in the zoning map. Staff finds that the requested zone change is not justified by a change in condition since the previous zoning classification was established. The original zoning of the property in 2014 via conditional overlay ordinance 4908 prohibited off-premise advertising on the property and established the intent of the development. Conditional overlays along primary arterials in southwest Fargo are common, including areas along interstates as you saw on the map previous in this part of the city. And all, all, all of these areas either prohibit, prohibit or restrict off-premise advertising within commercial zones. These areas were intended for commercial or mixed-use development, and the conditional overlays established design standards for the development. The intent was to not replicate the many off-premise advertising billboards along Main Avenue, University, and other areas like Interstate 29 south of town. Thirteen off-premise advertising signs have been permitted and constructed since the Fargo Sign Code was adopted in November of 2011, which suggests other areas of the city are more appropriate for off-premise advertising outside of these corridors with conditional overlays that prohibit them. Staff finds that this criteria is not satisfied. I'll jump to Criteria Three as Criteria Two has been satisfied. Criteria Three asks, will the approval of the zoning change adversely affect the condition or value of the property in the vicinity? The Fargo Sign Code states that signs can also threaten the public welfare by creating aesthetic concerns and detriments to property values. Such aesthetic concerns and detriments to property values are particularly great when an accumulation or proliferation of signs results in visual clutter, or when one or more signs spoil vistas or views, or when one or more signs add or increase commercial, commercialism in non-commercial areas. Staff finds that the proposed sign is of a size and scale that could create aesthetic concerns, which would lead to injury of property value. As context, the conditional overlays along Interstate and arterial roadways create a cohesive corridor and gateway approach in the city. The area in which the sign would be located is a walkable mixed-use development and is located within a existing conditional overlay zoning districts which seeks to advance design standards for human-scale walkable development. Staff contends the billboard sign is not compatible with the intended development pattern and removes predictability, including for other developers in the surrounding areas that have invested in or, and could therefore cause injury to other properties in the vicinity. Staff finds that this criteria has not been satisfied. And Criteria Four asks, is the proposed amendment consistent with the purpose of this land development code, the growth plan, and other adopted policies of the city? Section 20-0104 of the Land Development Code states the purpose of the LDC is to implement Fargo's comprehensive plan and related policies in a manner that protects the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Fargo. Although the Timber Creek development is not specifically identified as a walkable mixed-use center within the GO-2030 comprehensive plan, it has developed as a walkable mixed-use development that aligns with the principles outlined in the plan, including pedestrian-oriented mixed-use streetscape, building and parking development patterns that create people-oriented spaces, and street frontage which encourages a walkable environment and high-quality construction. Staff finds that billboard-style off-premise advertising does not align with the principles of development outlined within the GO-2030 comprehensive plan due to the anti-pedestrian nature of such billboards, that this type of signage is intended to grab the attention of the motoring public at a distance and at high speeds, and does not help create a people-oriented environment or encourage walkability. Staff finds that this criteria has not been satisfied. There's a couple of additional points that were outlined in the staff report that staff wanted to touch on here, including the existing master plan envisioned, the precedent in this, in the city's gateway, as well as fairness. As noted earlier in the staff report, the applicant has updated the application to include only 4801 Timber Parkway South, which is a nearly 40-acre undeveloped lot at the northeast corner of Interstate 29 and 52nd Avenue South. This property has remained vacant while much of the Timber Creek development has been built. Because this land is undeveloped, the use of the property for the future is unknown. If the application is approved and a sign is built in this location, it is likely to remain for decades and could not be removed. Issues could arise if the development was ever built as a mixed-use with residential located on this property, which furthers the concern of residential in proximity of large off-premise advertising signs. When the zoning district and conditional overlay was adopted at this location, a master plan envisioned for the site was adopted. This is the same master plan envisioned the current owner conveyed to the surrounding neighborhood, public, and elected officials. Allowing the zoning change to permit this new use modifies the original vision considerably. Staff seeks input on identifying the new conditions that warrant this change in vision, and if such vision is warranted, staff seeks input and guidance on establishing that new vision. Staff contends that allowing a billboard at this location prior to establishing a revised master plan envisioned for the site would be premature and limit the flexibility in adapting a vision that could be universally applied to the whole 40-acre site. The applicant has modified the application to restrict the location to within 100 feet of the west property line, directly adjacent to Interstate 29. The originally proposed sign would be located in proximity to existing residences. If the applicant proposed the sign even at the very southern point of this western property line, it would still be located in just about approximately 1,200 feet from the residentially zoned property. Although through strict application of the sign code, this location would be permitted as it would meet the setback from residential, it is the exact intent of the restriction through the conditional overlay that requires high-quality design, including maintaining views for residents and pedestrians within and around the development. Staff indicates that a buffer in separation of land uses is needed between residential and off-premise signage, and does not want to define an ambiguous buffer or overly restrictive buffer until a master plan for the site is established or, or confirmed. Precedent in the city's gateway. Additionally, the site is on the south side and one of the southern gateways into the cities, into the city. Fargo's primary area of growth is in the south and is continuing to develop, be developed as high-quality walkable mixed-use developments. Approval of the sign would make it the first off-premise advertising sign within city limits on the south side of, on Interstate I-29, and would ultimately set the tone of Fargo as prioritizing advertising and large-scale signs at one of the city's premier locations of high-quality development. In GO-2030, in the GO-2030 planning process and through other visioning planning processes, previous commissioners have indicated the request for more attractive entryways into the city, while staff does not contend that off-premise signs are unattractive the existing codes provide for design protection to potentially obtain a higher aesthetic development for one of the city's gateways, which is on par with the Microsoft campus to the west. There's concern from staff over the precedent setting if the application is approved. As noted, this property is located across the interstate from the Microsoft campus, which is the second-largest Microsoft campus, and is highly regarded for their design and aesthetics of the property. Staff has already received inquiries in proximity for off-premise advertising on property that currently has conditional overlays that prohibit them, and feels if this application is approved, similar applications would be forthcoming. And touching briefly, briefly on fairness, since the application first came to the Planning Department, planning staff has received and approved an application for a 672-square-foot sign along Interstate 94, which confirms that there are other areas more appropriate for the large off-premise signs in the city other than this location of a walkable mixed-use development. While there was discussion at the previous Planning Commission hearing about equal treatment with other property owners who may have off-premise signs already in existence along Interstate, staff contends that the current owner sought and requested the initial zoning district. The current owner advocated for this existing zoning district's overlay and protections and provided commitments to the community. Staff does not believe there is a due process or property rights issue related to this request, and may have a difference of, different opinion if we saw evidence of conditions or market changes in the community. This next slide just highlights, just an excerpt from GO-2030 for your reference. And staff finds that criteria have not been met and is recommending denial. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Megan. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, we can hear from the applicant if you have anything to add.
Good afternoon. Kyle Fryer with Property Resources Group. Thank you for hearing this again today. We appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts. At last month's Commission meeting, Planning Commission meeting, we went through some of these applications, this one being included, based on feedback from some of the members of the Commission. This particular application was tabled with recommendations on how to revise it and bring it back again, and we attempted to meet those, that feedback from the last meeting. And with that, it was restricting the area of the sign, so it'd be more interstate-driven in nature, not more. It would be totally designed to be located and focused on interstate traffic, and that was the intent of the change in the modification in the application we provided. And I think we, we met that and believe those changes would hopefully allow the, the Planning Commission to take a, a look at this in a favorable light today, and we'd ask for your approval of our application. A couple comments or feedbacks, or replies, I guess, from some of the staff's initial comments here. You know, some of it, I guess, and specific to the 40 acres and the future development of that, this is the business we're in. As staff indicated, this is one parcel at this time, and we have it in our best interest to develop that parcel in a way that's going to work for future tenants or our own properties, whoever may end up on that. And so we've got a motivating interest to keep this property in, being developed in a manner that helps everything going forward. So we've got no reason or motivation to be short-sighted here, as this is our development, it is our land, and we want everything to work together and flow together. So no one has a better interest, better motivation than we do to do that. In addition to that, there was comments made about the potential for residential on those 40 units. We had originally proposed residential for part of that, and that was not accepted, and it shifted to commercial through the process of zoning that when it initially came through after our acquisition of the property. And so I believe that's, you know, unlikely to be the case. We're not proposing that to be the case. So a what-if scenario that that might be, I don't feel that's an appropriate reason to look at denying this application on that side of it. I shared some of my thoughts about how the neighborhood develops and how these developments develop, and, and kind of commented on, you know, while this wasn't designed as a walkable neighborhood, you know, staff has indicated, well, it has some of the features. I-29 is not a walkable, right? I mean, we're not walking on I-29. And so from that standpoint, our intent is this would be geared towards I-29 traffic, and that would be its functionality of it. So even if the development did end up being, however it would come to be, more walkable, you know, this sign would not detract from anything along those lines from a walkability side of it, and detract from, people would doing that. And I'm not opposed to walkability, but yet at the same time, I understand the reality of kind of who we are and how we live. We've got another property where I see people parking where my office is, and they'll get in their car and they'll drive, you know, five doors down to the next property. And so the availability is great, but the reality isn't always there anyway on the walkability of some of these developments. As far as appropriateness of location, I guess, you know, I don't believe that's necessarily, you know, I think this is an appropriate location for that. And availability of other locations should not detract or enhance, one way or the other, impact the availability or the potential for this property to be an approved site for, for sign location. So I guess those are some of my thoughts. I don't need to ramble on any further, but I appreciate the opportunity. Again, we'd ask for your approval of this. We think it's an appropriate, acceptable spot for a sign of this nature, and, and it would not detract from the 52nd Avenue corridors. It would be removed from that, and beyond that would not detract from the city of Fargo as a whole. So with that, I'll gladly answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have one question. The initial application, you were looking at a sign 300 square feet, and now you're asking for a 600-square-foot sign at max. What's the reasoning behind that?
We were informed by staff initially that 300 square feet was the maximum that would be allowed there after our application, but prior to the Commission meeting, we were informed that it could be a larger sign. So that was discussed at the last Commission meeting, but it wasn't part of our original application. The, the reason behind it is the flexibility with the interstate traffic and the, the speed and distances that sign sign, excuse me, size sign is more appropriate for viewing than the smaller sign.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions?
One question for you. The original conditional overlay was established in 2018. Is that right? And what was the logic behind prohibiting off-premise signs at that time?
It had been modified several times in probably a short succession there as different replats came through and different zoning changes with things. In all reality, that's, those overlays were necessary to get things done and approved. It was hard to get things done without them. So from staff's perspective, you know, they are part of that and part of things. Would we have chose to have all those requirements in there? No. But it's kind of a reality of getting things approved sometimes.
We had a situation a while back where somebody had put up billboards along the interstate, and it was a commercial area. At least it was listed as commercial. And then later it was changed, and they put in apartment buildings, and it created a conflict because, you know, they weren't supposed to be compatible in that location. It became a difficult decision for all of us. Would you guarantee you'd never put residential in that area?
Yes, I don't know if I'd, I'm not the owner of the property, so it's maybe not my decision to guarantee that. My expectation is there would not be residential there.
But that, I mean, nobody was expecting when they put the billboards up.
I understand that. I understand that. I mean, things change and times change, but there's people living all over the world and country by signs sometimes, too. So I understand there's the change of things. So it's not my decision to make, unfortunately, on that. My expectation would be there would not be residential there. One, it's not the highest and best use for the property. Two, we've already been down this path, and it was, had approved that way after we originally proposed it, having additional residential on part of that original 52 acres, which is now 40 acres remaining.
When I look at the, I'm just looking at this image here that shows the, where the sign might be located. And if I look down the road from, in the interstate, there's some houses there, and I'm wondering, you know, if I'm in a residential area and all of a sudden I got a big billboard, especially a LED one flashing, it's, I'm wondering what that would feel like sitting in, especially those homes right on the edge here. Would that be highly visible to them?
For the...
Development just past that apartment building to the north.
For the, the single family or the twin homes there, it would not be visible. The apartment homes, it would be, which we've discussed.
It wouldn't be visible from those twin homes?
I don't believe so. I think it would be setback. I mean, if you're sitting in your garage, you might be able to see it, but...
It's in the back side, isn't it?
Or that side, you're correct. I apologize. The other side of the street would be in your garage.
Correct.
So I stand corrected on that. There is the potential that, yeah, the corner of the sign could be seen. I don't, I can't speak to one way or the other with 100% confidence one way or the other, whether that last unit on their back deck would be able to see the corner of the sign or not. And at this time, you know, we're going for the change, the exact locations permitting, things like that would have to follow.
Commissioners, other questions? Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Would you put the motion back up on the screen? Thank you. Commissioners, any, any discussion or questions, or are we ready to act?
I would move the motions in the staff report.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Holtz?
Aye.
Sobolik?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeyer?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Next is Item Three, Huntington's Edition, and Erin Nelson will walk us through this one.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Item Three, titled Huntington's Edition, is a request for a zone change from SR2 Single Dwelling Residential to PI Public and Institutional. This application is represented by the, the applicant, Fargo Public Schools, who is represented by Mr. Steve Shulke, who is present should you have any questions for the applicant. The subject property is located at 1406 Seventh Street South, which is the northwest corner of the Claire Barton Elementary School property. As you can see here in the aerial photo, the, the intent of this zoning change is to establish a uniform zoning district for all of the Claire Barton property. As you can see on the zoning map, the majority of the, the school site is within the PI Public Institutional zoning district. And then this little tract here, the subject property, is within the SR2 zoning district. Essentially, the, the short history there is the school district acquired what was formerly a single-family home many years back. I believe the house was demolished in 1997 or so, and the property has kind of sat there ever since. And so this is largely a cleanup zone change, essentially, to, to again, bring that property into, or bring all of the, the school district property into the, the same zoning district, just for clarity in, in zoning administration. Staff has received three comments regarding this, this application. Two of them are noted in your staff report, and then one more was received at the end of last week. In summary, there was one concern regarding perceived amount of on-street parking during events at the school, and that caller was in favor of seeing more parking. And then the other caller had some concerns with the existing... And then the other caller had some concerns with the existing open space on the subject property. You can kind of see in the aerial photo here, the subject property is largely green space. There's a maybe small portion of the parking lot that extends onto the south side and then some HVAC units on the east side there. And so in talking with the applicant, their preliminary site plans, they were able to send to us and we were able to share them with the callers. And essentially, the changes at the school site would add to parking. It would all be to the south or at the existing parking lot or to the south. The green space would remain is what the plans are now. And so I think all their concerns were largely answered with that. The third caller also had concerns about the open space and wanting it to remain. Again, overall, staff reviews this or sees this as largely a cleanup. Staff finds that it meets all the applicable requirements of the Land Development Code. Staff is recommending this application for approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thanks, Aaron. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there somebody here from the school district? Do you want to come up?
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Shulke. I'm with Auburn Miller Nelson Engineering.
Do you have any comments or anything?
I'll just add that at the beginning of the project, we started working with the school district and we, our first step was to talk to the planning department. Through the conversation we had with them, they felt that this would be a good opportunity to clean up this zoning change. For some reason, when the property was purchased, it wasn't rezoned. So what we're looking at doing is, Aaron mentioned, is rezoning the lot to match the land use right now.
Commissioners, any questions? Yep.
Is there any assurance that that green space would stay green space?
It's been, it's been green space, I guess, ever since the school's been using that property. And their intent right now is to not change that. The parking lot improvements that we made, we do not exceed the existing pavement that is there now into that lot. And then in addition to that, I'll add too that we're providing a residential buffer landscape along that property line that is not there now.
I think that sounds pleasant. It seems like the more green space we have, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then as far as parking, the question on the parking too, right now they have roughly 25 spots and the project that, that we're proposing or that is going to be constructed will bump that up to about 48 off-street parking spots.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? Are we ready to act?
Madam Chair, I will move to accept the findings and recommendations of staff.
Is there a second?
Sir.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sobolik?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you. Item number four is Fitzsimmons addition. This one presented by Donald Cress.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donald Cress from the Department of Planning and Development. Item four here is Fitzsimmons addition. This is another conditional overlay project. This is Fitzsimmons addition here. You might remember recently approving this, but this was last August, I believe, that this was approved. Seven lots, already in the general commercial zone here on 52nd Avenue, 38th Street, I-29 over here. Currently undeveloped, but the property owner and the developer are working together to get some, some development on this. Here's the Walmart over here. And you also might remember this piece here, this figures into our story. This is the district third addition. And you may recall, I believe in 2017, we allowed a modification of the conditional overlay on this one to permit the sign that's there now that has the Panda Express, Starbucks, and Autozone on it. And so that's a reference point for this. The applicant here was, wants to make four modifications to the conditional overlay that are on the Fitzsimmons addition. And they are stated in your staff report here. We'll go through them in detail here. And again, when you're, when you're looking at, looking, making these modifications to the conditional overlay, you're not approving any specific project or sign or building. You are approving, if your commission would approve them, modifications to the conditional overlay that, that would allow something a little different than would be allowed now. But everything still has to meet the remaining part of the conditional overlay and any other sign code, zoning ordinance, whatever applicable ordinance there would be. So there is no actual project that you're approving for this. And so the applicant has proposed four changes. Staff has a couple of comments and we'll go through those here. The first one has to do, I won't read all this here, but the existing language limits building facades to 100 feet, 150 feet in length. Those longer would have to incorporate articulations or projections. The applicant has requested that length be increased to 200 feet. The applicant had a similar modification that was made across I-29 on the Timber Creek area there, which was particularly for a grocery store. And so staff recommends that the applicant modify his proposal, you know, to allow it to be the 200 feet, but then also to do the rest of the things that were also required across the interstate on that Timber Creek, the Cashwise Grocery Store there. And those items are listed here. So again, the recommendation here, the 200 feet, we can, we can work with, but all the other things that went with that would also have to be included as part of the modification of this CO. So that's number one. Number two here has to do with the way rooftop equipment such as HVAC units are screened. The existing language is there. The applicant proposed that this be modified as indicated there. That is actually a modification that happened on the Blue Water Creek project that apparently has not caused any difficulty. So, you know, staff would recommend that we can accept that proposed modification as is. We're skipping the order here a little bit. Item four requests a reduction in overall landscaping. The cumulative open space of each lot shall consist of 15% of the lot. The applicant proposed reducing it to 10. Staff recommends that that be denied because we have no precedent for reducing landscaping. Again, that's also a gateway area. It's, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of roadway in there and the landscaping is going to add to that, the quality of that. And then the one that is, I've shortened here, is the sign. So this is where we tie back to that thought about the sign across 52nd. The current conditional overlay requests or restricts sign height to 45 feet. The applicant proposes the sign height shall be 60 feet, similar to matching the one across the south, to the south. So staff makes the recommendation that in the interest of keeping consistent with the modifications to a similar conditional overlay that were granted to the property across 52nd Avenue South, which is the district for our third addition, staff recommends that that modification of the conditional overlay state, one on-premise static multi-tenant sign positioned to be visible from Interstate 29, maybe up to 60 feet in height. So that, it's an on-premise sign. That's not a billboard. It's an on-premise sign advertising tenants. And the applicant has some graphics here. These are included in your packet. So this is, this is the existing sign, the Panda Express sign here. This would be the proposed sign, visible from I-29 here. Here is a theoretical sign here. Again, this sign would still have to meet the sign code and any other applicable regulations, but that's, look, it's a lighted sign, but not a digital sign, as I understand it. Again, here, if you're coming south on I-29, you'd see the applicant's sign here. And as you see, the existing sign over there across 52nd is quite visible. And here's just a little close-up of where this would be on the, on the tip of that property that comes over to I-29. This is outside of the DOT right-of-way. This is on the applicant's property. So the, our recommendation is to accept the findings, recommendations of staff and approve the proposals as modified by staff. So those, those couple notes that we went through there, that is a format in which we could find the proposed modifications acceptable. And again, you know, you're just approving the changes. You're not approving a particular project. The applicant's representative, Tanner Brant, is with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. That includes staff, concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Donald? Thank you, Donald. Does the applicant want to come up and add to the comments?
Good afternoon. For these, for the first two, we are basically proposing those just as they have been done in similar, in similar developments for the building facades and for the rooftop screening. As for the on-premise sign, we'd like to increase that to 60 feet due to that, the tall overpass on 52nd Avenue and that it's similar to the one to the south, that Walmart parking lot. For the landscaping, this is not a requirement for us to move forward, but we were just hoping to have some flexibility in order to increase the density of the developments and to increase building size and decrease the specials per square feet. But this is not something that would impede us from moving forward with this project.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? Ready to act?
Don, the, the original change at 52nd in terms of the sign height, was that all because of the height of the interchange?
I believe so, sir. If you, if you look, I don't want to go too fast through these and make you seasick here, but you don't see it really well on the aerial, but this property, if you've run out there, is actually considerably below the high, the road. You go downhill to go into those properties. And again, as Mr. Brant mentioned, that and the height of the interchange here, if you're going to clear that with a sign, you do need some height to do that.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I would move to accept the findings and recommendations of staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Scherling?
Yes.
Gunkelman? I'm sorry. Sobolik?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
McGelkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, before, I have a handout to hand out, so if I may.
Thank you. And this is for item 5A and B?
Yes, ma'am. This is just an updated plat. There's just a couple modifications I'll go through. Nothing too bad. It's actually a request that we made, a modification made at the request of staff. Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, this is for Selkirk Place First Edition.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Selkirk Place First Edition is, the handout I've given out to you actually just has a minor change in the way the lots are numbered. This was down at the request of staff. We appreciate Mr. Zeltinger's quick fix on that earlier this week. So a proposal for a plat and zone change in this area that is actually outside the city limits right now, largely, there's an annexation that is item E1 that is concurrent with this. Your commission evaluates the annexation proposal for consistency with the growth plan. The final decision is the city commission's. You don't have to do item E1 before you do this in, at your commission. So understand that the annexation will run concurrently with this with the goal that both the annexation, the plat and zone change will come to the city commission for final approval at the same time. So the proposed annexation area is this whole quarter here, or most of a quarter. And then this is the proposed platted area here. A couple of features here to point out. Here is the 64th Avenue South and then I-29. And then 25th Street is off, way off over here. Davies is way down over here. As you know, Commissioners, there's a proposed to be a cross over the interstate, not an interchange, but a bridge over the interstate coming up here very shortly in the next couple of years. This is Drain 53, County Drain 53. There's actually a couple of properties in this overall area that are owned by the City of Fargo and the Southeast Cass Water Resources District, more commonly known as the Drain Board. And some of these will be, were just included in the plat. They're not going to be developed as residential commercial, but it cleans up the plating of these, of the drain and the levee and future lots that the city will need for that. So that's included in the plat as well. And you'll see that as we go forward. So the plat here looks at dividing this into a number of lots here. This large triangular lot here is for the future right-of-way of the interchange. This middle lot here will be zone general commercial. And then there will be a fire station in this lot here. You may have heard a discussion and it's noted, I believe, in the staff report about a land swap. And the city owns some property over here, which would be exchanged with the developer and the property owner for property over here. Apparently, this is a more advantageous location to have a fire station. Chief Dirksen is here, Fire Chief Steve Dirksen is here, and he might be able to give you more detail if you need, if you need that, the chief to give me a briefing on that. And then, as you see, area here largely developed with single-family residential. And then these lots over here are, are all government-owned in one way or other, either the City of Fargo or Southeast Cass are owned for various, for various drainage and stormwater control purposes. The modification that you have in your, that was made on your plat that I handed out, and this is, this is updated, this matches the plat you have, but in the earlier version that was in your packet, this lot here was known as Outlet A. We don't actually use outlots. And so the project engineer, Mr. Zeltinger, again, at staff's request, renumbered this. So the numbering of all subsequent lots changed. So this, you know, this used to be 12 and 11 and now it's 12. That used to be 16, now it's 17 because lots have to be numbered sequentially. It's a surveying thing. This lot here, Lot 11, is not a gigantic SR2-zoned lot. It is intended to, in the future, be subdivided into a couple smaller lots. And it's, it's sort of filling in the space right now because we needed to have this right-of-way connect. These other couple lots we'll look at here, Lot 5 and lots 9, 10, and 11 here will be zoned SR4, and we'll look at a zoning map in a minute. And they are intended to be, in the future, divided into twin homes or townhomes as the developer was, goes forward with this project. The remaining area down here is zoned agricultural and commercial. And there was actually this, the west half or west, almost a half of this was zoned commercial some years ago. So they'll remain zoned that way right now. And then future phases will develop down here. There is a master plan we'll look at in a minute. This is just a close-up of the, of the main residential areas here. And then this would be the, the general master plan. Again, your commission is not approving the master plan as you would in a planned unit development, but this is just to give an idea of what, how this is going to come together. Again, Again, here's the current plat like this. And then, as we see, there's a large park down here, some more residential, smaller park over here, an area down here, some detention basins, and there'd be a proposed commercial along the interstate here. This, again, area is already zoned commercial. And commissioners, just as a, excuse me a moment. Just as a background, on all projects, we have pre-development meetings, and we've had rather extensive meetings with the applicant, the property owner, and the engineer, Mr. Scott Carey, and of course, Mrs. Hector, going through this with all our departments, and also including our fellow jurisdictions, the Fargo Park District, working on these, the location and size of these parks. And so, we've all been working at this for several months, at least. And we'll look at a zoning, we'll look at the zoning map here. I must say, pardon my irregular line work. My hand wasn't working too well this morning. But we'll see here, again, these, the right-of-way area and the fire station be zoned PI, publicly owned, government-owned facilities. General commercial here, however that develops. This shows these little area of SR4, mostly SR2 here, single-family. And again, this is all PI. There's an enumeration in your, two enumerations in your staff report. This is the slightly updated with the updated lot numbers. But again, this just shows that, you know, lots 1 through 11, mainly single-dwelling residential, some republican institutional. And then, here's a breakdown of how those public and institutional lots are. So, there's a detention basin, there's a levee, there's the actual drain, there's a levee on the other side. There's a little corner down there that will probably become part of the Fargo Park that is part of Golden Valley. There's the fire station, and then there's the right-of-way for the crossover. So, we just were able to, again, with the developers' cooperation and the engineers', or surveyors' cooperation, just plat all this stuff together so it all works as one project. So, again, we've just taken a look at the zoning here. And then, will, this remains ag, there's no action required for that. And as the property evolves, we will work with the developer on future phases, probably similar to the master plan that you're looking at. Again, these, as noted in your staff report, there are a couple of plans that apply to this, the 2007 growth plan, as well as the Southwest Metro Transportation Plan. We want to make sure we ensure connectivity. Just as a reference point, down here is Golden Valley subdivision. Over here was proposed to be another addition of Golden Valley. That was denied back in 2016. There were concerns about the road connectivity for 67th. Perhaps that will be coming back. That's a different developer than this is. But perhaps that'll be coming back, and we'll have that continuity with 67th Avenue all the way across this property and then all the way across 25th, and then that continues on east for some distance. The applicant, Mr. Scott Carey, is with us this afternoon, as well as the engineer, or surveyor Jeff Zeltinger, and the property owner, Mrs. Hector. Staff's recommendation is shown on the screen and stated in your staff report. That concludes staff's presentation, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Commissioners, any questions for Donald at this time?
Madam Chair, if I may just comment before you go into those that are additional information and feedback. If you look on page 2 of the packet, you'll see dotted lines around the potential interchange on 64th. Couple points. One, Monday, there'll be a brown bag in this room to talk about the future of 64th Avenue. A month or so ago, the request, I think the sense from the city commission was to go have a brown bag and learn more about the future of this area. There's one commissioner in particular that believes we need to be very prudent in our decision-making in whether we build an overpass. And then, five years, if demand warrants, an interchange be built again or added to it would be more costly. And so, I just throw that out, that I don't believe interchange or not a decision has been made, because it has not. We have acquired easements on three of the four corners. And a meeting I had this morning with a project, if that continues forward, you're going to be receiving applications this summer that's going to be quite a dramatic, impressive development to the west. And so, the point being is, is there enough data and enough, you know, traffic, if you will, that'll warrant an application to the state, as I understand it, to allow for another interchange rather than the two-mile rule of thumb? And my sense, just what I hear, what's coming, is that it's going to be a very high-growth area, and I think the situation warrants a really thorough review on building an overpass and/or an interchange now versus an overpass and an interchange five, seven years from now. So, anyway, just FYI background.
Thank you. I would invite the applicant up if they have anything to add to the conversation.
Can I ask Tony a question? Is there, according to the plan as it's been presented here, would the different, would it make any difference what kind of interchange was made on 64th?
What kind?
Yeah, I mean, what, whether it was, you were talking about that the potential was going to come up for a decision as to what type of interchange it's going to be. I think that earlier, it was described as one that was just an overpass. So, all I'm saying, asking is, is the information that you just gave us, is it going to impact this plan at all?
My understanding is it won't impact this plan at all because there's easements being acquired, and I think that's illustrated as well. And if I, my conversation, Nicole was correct. That's being preserved, so it won't have an impact on the project. But the point being is, this is going to be a high-growth area for the City of Fargo in the future, and we need to be prudent in our planning to, what is the right decision? And then, obviously, resources. There's moving target about the cost of interchange added to an overpass. If you look at the scale of the interchange at 52nd Avenue, for example, it wouldn't be of that scale, then it would be at a smaller single lane at 64th to allow that, you know, future traffic congestion, because 52nd is going to grow exponentially, and so is 64th, and so is 76th, because that's where the wave of growth is for the city. And so, it's just a matter of figuring out what's the right step and what are the resources if the decision is made. Hope that clarifies, but it won't impact this project.
Oh, maybe. To ask to answer Commissioner Morgan's question on the plat attachment. So, basically, what's shown on PI on the screen on the left-hand corner, I don't know if you can see Donald's cursor, but that's actually, as part of this project, acquired right-of-way, I'm not sure if acquired is the right word, but dedicated right-of-way for future interchange or overpass. Or the point is, we reserve the right-of-way that's needed as part of this plat, regardless of the future roadway design. And I don't know if that's, you know, I think the city engineer will correct me if I'm wrong.
Commissioner, I believe your question is, is there enough right-of-way if they build a big interchange, basically?
Yeah, and this project and the interchange don't really have anything to do with one another, in other words.
I think the observations that Commissioner and the planning director have made is that there's a big piece of land reserved there for whatever configuration would come forward, is my understanding as well, to just reinforce what they said.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Donald? Now, let's invite the applicant up if you have anything to add to the conversation. Okay? Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Open it up for, yep, go ahead.
You got to open it up for public hearing.
We'll open it up for public comment. Any members of the audience wish to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, close public comment. Donald?
Just wanted to add that we, since the Southeast Cass Water Resources District is involved in this, they've been working with us, they're aware of this. But this will, we'll take this to them next, Tuesday is going to be their next meeting. So, we've continued to work with them, they're aware of this, and they will be a signatory to it because they're an owner in this. But that, it shouldn't be any, as far as we know, any roadblock to this. They'll, we'll go through, it'll go through the standard process with city commission here. But we appreciate their cooperation. They're always good at advising us and working with us.
Donald, would you put the recommended motion up on the screen, please? Thank you. Commissioners, any?
I'll make the recommended motion.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
There's a couple seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sobolik?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried. Let's see. It's 4 o'clock. Let's just take a quick five-minute break and be back at 4:05. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Let's continue on. We actually have heard of all of our public hearing items, and we are on to E1, the annexation. Donald?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Again, this is really part of the project. We just looked at the Selkirk Place First Edition. This is to annex approximately 171 acres here, almost 172 acres, here in Section 11. Again, this area is, it can be annexed because it is adjacent to the city. It's adjacent to at least one major arterial. It's adjacent to the city on two sides. And when you're, here's a plat of that annexation area. This is Auditor's Lot 1. This is the area, I believe, the city owns that we're going to be swapping for the fire station. So, we'll see this annexation area. And again, your position as the planning commission is to review this and verify that it's consistent with the, in this case, the 2007 growth plan. As we see here, there's commercial, which is already here. There is some multifamily, single-family, and parks. The large multifamily component isn't in this phase of it. So, it's, you know, these land use maps are not exact. They're not like a zoning map or a plat. They're not exact lines. But there is, you know, a significant single-family and commercial and park component to this, and there will be, this is the greenway, this is the drain over here. And so, we'll see that there, that as the project evolves, that these land uses will be, we believe, met in the proposed, the overall project. And so, as noted in your staff report there, again, looking at that, that's the same map that we looked at a little bit ago. That's the overall plan for it, the master plan. So, just in that evaluation, staff recommends that your commission find the proposed annexation consistent with the 2007 growth plan. Then, there's actually, this is a petition, just for the, so you know this, the, this is a petition, a petition for annexation. That is, the property owner requested annexation. This is not a city-initiated annexation. This is a property owner-initiated annexation. And pursuant to the North Dakota Century Code, the city commission is the final decision-maker on that. We work this, this is a, since it's owner-initiated, it's a slightly shorter process than it would be were it a city-initiated one. And we time it out so they end up with the planning commission at the same time, or the city commission at the same time. So, the, they don't, you know, crash into each other, or they work out together. So, if the city will rule on them both at the same time. So, that concludes staff's presentation. I believe the applicants have departed here, so. And again, a review, not a public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions for Donald? Or if we can entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll offer the motion that's included in the staff report.
Okay, is there a second? Second? There's a second? Any discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote on this one as well. Thank you.
Sobolik?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Staufferin?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Fisher?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Donald. And our last item of the night, E2, HUD program updates, activities, and amendments. I think Tia's making her way up here. Well, Nicole, do you want to kick it off for us?
Yeah, I was going to kick it off, and I think as Tia walks up, I wanted to do a brief introduction. For those that haven't met Tia Brasseth, she's our Community Development Planning Coordinator. And so, for those who knew Dan Molly and his role in community development in HUD management funds, Tia has filled that role. She's been with us for about nine months, and it just dawned on me that maybe you haven't all had a chance to meet her yet. So, we're really glad to have Tia on board. And I'll be here to answer any questions, but Tia's got kind of a presentation to bring forth for you. We just did the same presentation in the Community Development Committee, and she'll explain a little bit more intention on why we're in front of you today.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you, Nicole, for the nice introduction. Yeah, this is my first planning commission meeting since I've worked for the City of Fargo, so I'm glad to be here. So, the, we have a citizen participation plan as part of our HUD programming, and that requires us to come to the planning commission for any major amendments that we have to our HUD program plans. So, with that, I'm going to introduce some amendments that we're starting a public process on, as well as give you a little bit of a background and update on our HUD programs and our current and upcoming administration. So, as you see here, we are starting the public process for our 19 Home and CDBG Annual Action Plan and Prior Year Amendments. They're both going to run on the same timeline, so we can do everything within that 30-day required public comment process. We are developing and implementing a CDBG workout plan to help bring our program into compliance. Currently, we have more funds in our CDBG line of credit than we should, and I'll talk about that briefly in some upcoming slides. And as a result of that, we are looking at redesigning and restructuring that program to be in yearly compliance. And then, the most exciting part is preparing for our next five-year consolidated plan. We are currently in our fifth year of our 2015 to 2019 plan. So, we'll be starting some outreach later this summer for our next five-year plan. So, a little bit on that compliance issue. Every year, HUD does something what's called the Timely Expenditure Test. It happens every March 2nd. It's a calculated ratio of the funds that are in our CDBG line of credit. So, no more than one and a half times the amount of the current year's grant may be in that line of credit. So, in 2019, first time that this has ever happened in Fargo, as far as we know, and according to HUD's records, we failed that test. And we believe that's because there are projects that haven't come to fruition, which, you know, at the time of application, maybe some applicants weren't fully prepared to carry out those projects, or there might have been some low capacity, not realizing all of the requirements that may have been involved in those particular projects on a federal standpoint. And then, limited city staff resources. There have been a lot of changes in the Community Development Division with a lot of people leaving and coming. So, me being one of the new people that's on board. So, with that and a multiple number of small projects, it gets difficult to administer so many of those, especially when, you know, you could have a $1,000 project or a $1 million project, and it'll be the same administration requirements for CDBG and home programs. So, not to scare everybody, failing once is not uncommon. It has happened locally in Moorhead and Grand Forks. When I worked for the City of Moorhead, which is where it was previous to the City of Fargo, we have been through this process. So, I am familiar with it and what we need to do to get back on track, and I'm not scared of it. Failing twice consecutively could result in a freeze of those funds until we're in compliance, which would be under 1.5%, which makes sense. So, the next steps for passing the Timely Expenditure Test, we must stay focused and on schedule with what we say we're going to do. Choose larger projects to expend funds quickly, so fewer of those tinier projects that we have been doing, $150,000 or more. Choose quick and easy spending activities such as property acquisition, public facilities improvements, affordable housing development, and our single-family home rehab loan program. And then, partner with organizations that are experienced and prepared to expend those funds quickly and correctly by February 2020. And that would be every single year. So, every February, we should be fully ready to be in compliance for that March 2nd test. So, what else we need to do is develop and implement what's called a workout plan. That's a HUD requirement. If you don't meet that Timely Expenditure Test, you have to develop a workout plan. And what that is, is it's basically saying how you're going to get those funds down by the next Timely Expenditure Test. So, by next March 2020, it'll include scheduled activities, milestones, and projected expenditures. And we're in the process of working on that, and we'll soon be submitting that to HUD. And once we are back on track, there'll be more flexibility to maybe work with some of those organizations that need a little bit more staff support. And actually, once we have a few more CD staff, which is going to be upcoming, we'll have at least one new person on staff to help out with things like that. We can be more flexible with who we work with. So, here's just a quick outline of our 2019 plan and amendments. April 23rd is when we went to the CD committee, and they saw this presentation. And we proposed the plan and the amendments, and they approved moving forward and bringing it to city commission. Today, May 7th, is giving you guys the same presentation, Today, May 7th, is giving you guys the same presentation, only you don't have to approve the plan, it's just the amendments that we'll be looking at. And then on May 20th, during our public comment period, which is May 13 through June 12th, we'll be doing a public hearing at City Commission, so they'll see this presentation again, well, not again, but they'll be, most of them will be seeing it for the first time. And then the people that are being proposed, or the organizations that are being proposed for funding, will be there to answer any questions that anybody might have for those activities. And then on June 17th, after the conclusion of that 30-day public comment period, we will go back to City Commission for final consideration, so we can then submit it to HUD for final approval. And technically, our 2019 program year has started already, it's every May 1st through April 30th, and it's not uncommon to be this late in the game. We just found out about two and a half, three week, not even, yeah, about two weeks ago, what our award would be, so now we can submit it with real numbers, which we're required to do by HUD. So for the 2019 applications that we received, we did something a little different this year. Every year prior to this year, we've been doing a single application for our social service fund and for our HUD programs. This year, we separated it, since social service fund dollars are a lot easier to spend, and they're kind of more, they make more sense for those organizations that might need a lot more assistance managing a federal program. So what happened is, like, in prior years, I've heard that we've had less than a handful of applicants actually specify CDBG or HUD on those, or home on those applications. But this year, I think the reason we got 35 applications is because of that separation. So people who applied for the social service funding also applied for CDBG. So we got a huge number of applications, and developed a Community Development Subcommittee, so it's Community Development Committee members, there were three of them on that Subcommittee to review applications with city staff. So just so you know the background, a little bit about what we can and can't do, the City of Fargo gets to decide who, what, and how of those applications. So who's going to implement those activities, that's something we get to determine based on the applications. It's usually a combination of city staff and sub-recipient organizations that help carry out plans. For example, our single-family home rehabilitation loan program, that's carried out by city staff, whereas we might have another sub-recipient, such as Beyond Shelter, that's developing affordable housing, who would be a sub-recipient, so that's that separation there. We get to determine what type of activities to fund, and how those activities and organizations will be selected. So we don't have to use a formal application process if we don't want to, but it is the method we're using right now. This year, we're implementing more of a mixed-method approach, based on the results of that timeliness test. So here are the different, you know, ways you can go through picking activities, and the first one is that formal application process, which may also be used as an idea-collecting process. So we could potentially change how we do that, and just use it to generate a queue of projects, instead of having people specify their budgets, and it's like less of a request and more of, here's what we're doing, and we'd be interested in being part of your five-year plan goals. We could do it case-by-case proposals, which we get a lot of phone calls, asking about that funding source and how it might be used, and so these conversations are continuously going throughout the year. So we can select activities based on that. Limited or unsolicited applications, proactively seeking out and choosing only those projects that fit within our five-year plan goals, and solicited applications from qualified organizations. Most communities do approach CDBG and home funds this way, so that they have really robust projects, and they are out in the community seeking those. So the prioritization of applications, this is how the Subcommittee looked at each application, and it's how we would do it in a mixed-method approach also. How does it fit into your five-year plan goals? What is city staff's capacity, as well as the organization's capacity that's applying for those funds? Project management, compliance with regulations? What's our history with sub- recipients and particular activities? What's our experience in that? Timelines that's correlated with having to spend those funds as quickly as possible? So if an applicant has a timeline that's further out, maybe we'll consider looking at that down the road, and not something in the current timeline. Where must be in the city Fargo limits, unless it's an activity that benefits Fargo residents. For example, when I worked in Morehead, there was the FM food pantry, so City of Morehead dished out some CDBG funds for that project, because there were Morehead residents. We could do the same thing if there was something over there in West Fargo. And then obviously, the request type, so depending on what type of request it is, there's really low caps on our public service categories, which a majority of the applications are, and that's like the social service-type activities, tenant education, homebuyer education, anything that's not specifically tied to housing or slum and blight removal typically will fall under those capped limits of public service categories or program administration. So I kind of touched on this a little bit earlier, in order to meet that 2020 timeliness test, we had to change our direction with how we looked at those applications. Initially, the CD Commission, or Committee, Subcommittee recommended a variety of projects, about five or six different projects, but we had to slim that down so that we could spend funds faster, and now we're only looking at housing and homelessness, two different projects, and I'll show you the list of projects that we're proposing in our 2019 plan. And this also comes out of conversations with our HUD representative, and their recommendations on how we can achieve the timeliness test next year. So here's an estimation of our resources for 2019. The first two, CDBG and home, those are actual allocation amounts that we found out a couple of weeks ago, so we're getting a little bit less in home and a little bit more in CDBG. And then we have unobligated from those projects that didn't come to fruition, and program income for repayments. For example, the NACOMAS daycare is no longer owned by who they were owned by before, so they had to do a repayment, because we put funds into that many years ago. So that comes back as what is called program income, and now we need to allocate it towards other eligible projects, which we have allocated that same amount, all of it is right here. These are the proposed 2019 activities and budgets. We can just quickly go through the list. So looking at affordable housing and homelessness, the first two, Beyond Shelter wants to do some affordable housing, 345,000. Youth Works wants to do an acquisition of a property to add more homeless beds to the community, youth homeless beds. And that's actually the one goal left in our five-year plan that has been unfulfilled. We said five years ago that we would like to try to add four homeless beds to Fargo, and we haven't been able to, but they are saying they can add at least two by doing this acquisition. So it fits just right for what we need to do with that five-year plan. And then we have affordable housing development in partnership with public and private housing developers. Some prevention operation funds to our FM Coalition to End Homelessness, formerly the FM Coalition of Homeless Persons, they've recently changed their name. Then Gladys Ray Shelter has some direct care initiatives that we provide, are, we're proposing to provide funds for. Then our home rehab program, which we've done for decades. And Chodo set-aside funds, Chodo is Community Development Housing Organization, Fargo only has one that's beyond shelter right now. Affordable senior housing development with public and private housing developers. We've been having conversations with people in the community that are interested in pursuing this, so it's kind of a flexible goal right now. There's no specific organization or developer, builder that we're looking at, it's just in there, so that we won't have to go through this process again, should those activities continue to come about. And then program admin and contingency are listed there, too, for any items that might need to meet, move around a little bit. And this is what we need your approval to continue on, these are our proposed amendments. So we are canceling two 2018 activities, one is the Special Assessments Assistance Program for 15,000. That was funded through another source at this time, so it's still here for this year, but it's not funded with Community Development Block Grant, because it's actually pretty difficult to administer that program with those funds and really admin intense. And then the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center Public Facilities Improvements Project, project was canceled by Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, because I think they're thinking about moving, so they pulled out of that project, and we have reallocated those funds, are proposed to reallocate those funds. And then the revised 2018 activities. So we have an existing slum and blight and abatement of hazardous property activity with our Community Development Block Grant funds, that we're proposing to pull 250,000 from and transfer it to a new activity for affordable housing development. And this came, this, you can kind of look at this as more of an expansion of the slum and blight, because we've come across some properties that might be good partnerships with Habitat for Humanity that wouldn't fall under blight, but would fall under a good rehab project, where they might want to rehabilitate the home, and then use one of their partner families to occupy that home. So it's, if you look at it that way, that's really what we're doing, is expanding what we can do with those funds. And then there is that fund, and the new five-year plan goal would be adding that activity of affordable housing development to include that. So for future administration of HUD programs, I think you kind of got the gist of what I was getting at, we're primarily going to have to focus on larger projects for a while, to make sure that we meet our annual compliance goals, and limit the number of small projects we are doing, and really look at those critically, to make sure that if we are going to do any small projects, that it's a robust organization that's doing it, and we have time to help administer that program, and maybe even direct them to the social service fund where it's appropriate. And then partner with experienced organizations and agencies, continue to use a mixed-method approach, and generate a queue of projects that we always have on hand, should some other projects not come to fruition, we'll be ready to look at the list, okay, what's next on our list, and work with those agencies. And maybe change how we do our future application process. It's all going to be a part of how we redesign and restructure the program along the way. But yeah, in a nutshell, I guess that's pretty much everything, and the action that we're seeking from you this afternoon is to proceed with our CDBG and home amendments for 2018, or 2019, and prior year amendments as it is presented.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? If not, there's the recommended motion at the bottom of the front page there, first page. Anybody would like to make the motion?
I will move that we proceed with the CDBG home amendments grant administration as presented.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Okay, take a roll call vote, please.
Staufferin?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Sobelik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Scherling?
Yes.
Morgan?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider. I mean, Fisher, sorry.
Aye. Motion is carried. That concludes our business for the day. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and we are adjourned.